Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls Board of Education meeting on this Monday, January 13th, the first board meeting of 2025 and the second full week of back to school. Hope everyone had a relaxing and restful break. I would like to call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which is a pretty standard consent agenda, which is approval of tonight's agenda, the last meeting and special board meeting minutes, approval of accounts payable and open enrollment report and HR report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board to clarify or amendments that anyone would like to make? Hearing none. I'll ask all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Move on to public comment, which we don't have tonight, so we'll move on to item D, our agenda, which is communications. Typically, we have our student board representative go first, Natalie Schmattiki, but tonight, we're going to do things a little bit differently and we're going to have Janelle Darst, our communications director, do the district update first because we have a special presentation from our student representative.
Perfect. And I know you're very excited to get to that, and I have kind of a short-ish presentation tonight, so we'll just start off. Excited, I know the special board meeting there in December was approving the TPC, the Shields Tiger Performance Center construction for Phase One, so we're going to be doing a, I would say, a cold weather groundbreaking, which means some dirt brought in for us to break ground with construction happening still. It'll be a couple of months before it's actually happening, but we're really excited for this and kind of want to kick off what's going to be then the continued fundraising efforts to get to Phase Two for this project. So it's going to be this Wednesday, four o'clock at the TPC site, which is of course right between the new high school and the stadium. We'll have a few speakers and then do some photo ops for those dignitaries that will be in attendance, so we encourage anyone to come out and support all the efforts that's been happening with, we have a great committee that's been doing lots of fundraising and grants and all types of things, so we hope to do some recognition of all of those as well. So that'll be this Wednesday. Also wanted to mention our preschool registration for next year, yes, we're talking about next year already, will open on Friday, January 31st at noon, and this is an online registration and we take first come, first serve. Our preschool program is highly sought after in our community, so we really encourage everyone to get online and get that information figured out so you're able to register then, starting at noon is when the link goes live, and then you'll be contacted, of course, by the district depending on availability and if your children is able to get into that preschool, so we just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Also, just wanted to highlight a few things, this was from December, actually, and I think it's just important to recognize our school resource officers. We have two school resource officers, Officer Reimers and Officer Johansson. One of the many things they do across our district is actually spend time visiting our elementary buildings and just having lunch with our elementary students, so sometimes just to kind of make those connections, let them know that there's someone they can go to and talk to. They also give a lot of presentations at the elementary level as well, talking about safe practices, being online, digital citizenship, how to be safe, all those types of things, so this is just kind of one of the highlights of something that they do as they go across all of our buildings in the district. And also wanted to highlight, this was a grant that was received from the Excellence Grants for the Cedar Falls Schools Foundation, and this is Hanson Elementary, and they were awarded a grant to purchase durable whiteboards for their classrooms, and these are vertical, double-sided whiteboards, and then the students are able to use those for solving math problems, brainstorming, creative ideas, and able to build their communication skills, so just wanted to do a thank you to the Schools Foundation and then a thank you to Hanson for especially posting that and sharing that for the community to be aware of. We've had lots of great things happening on the athletic side, just a couple highlights. This is the head coach for girls' basketball, Greg Groh, who's got his 200th career win in December, and then along with Ryan Schultz, head coach for men's basketball, his 200th career win as well, so congratulations to both of them. Men's basketball and women's both ranked, I believe, in the top 10, doing really well this season, so it'll be exciting to watch them. And of course, follow along everything on the Bound app for anything athletics, especially as winter weather, if things, schedules change, this is where you can find out all that information, and you can continue to follow along on the district, everything happening. Any questions?
Actually, Janelle, one quick one, the Bound app, I'm not sure, I know some schools are going cashless and using the Bound app, do you know anything about that at Cedar Falls?
We are cash preferred in our district.
Okay.
Cashless.
Cashless.
Yes, sorry, I wanted to make sure, I mean, I contacted them. Yes, we are cashless. You can, you just buy it with the tickets within the Bound app, and then you have a QR code that can be scanned. If you have a pass or the Golden Age pass, those are also just scanned then at the door.
And you can apply for those, you buy those through the Bound app itself, is that correct?
Yep, all that's right, purchased right through the Bound app, along with the Booster Club memberships and everything is right through that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, one of the things that we're going to start doing, I would say on a monthly basis in 2025, is a few of us were talking about just how to tell the story of Cedar Falls and just build the culture that way, and what we came up with is just to invite someone from the school community, once a month, to just come and share what's going on in their little corner of the world. So we thought the first thing that we could do, after having made probably one of our biggest facilities upgrades in decades with the new high school, is to have our student representative Natalie Schmattiki bring some other students, fellow students with her, and just give us some feedback and some insights on how the new high school building has been after now being in it for half of a year. So Natalie, I'll turn it over to you, and you can have the floor and share what you want to.
Hi. At our last meeting, we shared about some of the things happening at the new high school with the achievements of our students in their wide variety of clubs and extracurricular activities. Today, I'm excited to introduce to you a few students who will share their personal experiences from the new high school, including the clubs and activities they're involved in, and how these clubs and extracurricular activities have been benefiting from the new high school.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jada Strowman, and I'm a senior at Cedar Falls, and I am involved in volleyball, weightlifting, FCA, and the Fields of Faith event, and I just wanted to discuss some of the things that the new high school has offered us. So with volleyball, our new gym has AC, which is amazing, so this means that obviously air, and then we don't have to wipe up the floors every time a sweaty body hits the ground, so that's great. Also, we were able to host our own home tournament this year, which we won, which was great, and we didn't have to go rent out at the WRC or at FIT Courts, so it was great to actually be able to host that on our own home court this year. In addition, the new equipment was a lot nicer, and it was very easy to set up and take down, along with the new, the video screen too, for the hype video, that gets just fans excited, different fog machines and lights, and then also they're able to display different pictures of each individual athlete throughout the night as someone would get a kill or a dig or just something great happened. So that is with volleyball, and then also with weightlifting. Cedar Falls is a huge school, and we do have a limited amount of racks and stuff at the old high school, so this year, we have a new weightlifting facility, which has a lot more racks and a lot of different more equipment, which was great because we have so many athletes and students that are so involved. That way, we don't have, we still offer early bird lifting, but there isn't much lifting after school anymore, which is great because so many people are able to do it in class and at their own racks, so that's amazing. Moving on to FCA, FCA is the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, which I am a student leader for, along with 13 other athletes, and we meet every Tuesday. It's called our huddles, and we share a meal together and then read different passages of scripture and then just go over it in our own small groups. So I have a group of about 14 girls, and it's really great this year because before in our old gym, we had to break off into small groups and like go into like the backside of the gym, the front side of the gym, and it was really loud, very crowded, but this year, because we have more space, we're able to all be together while still having enough room to keep our small groups intimate, so that's amazing. And then also, our Fields of Faith event, which is hosted by FCA, was at our high school this year, and there was a better sound system, so that's great. I was one of the student testimonial speakers, so I shared my testimony that night in front of everyone, and we didn't have to bring in our own sound system and own speaker, we were able to use the high schools, which was great, and then everyone was able to meet on the field after for small groups, and then just time of prayer, and then before Fields of Faith, we were able to meet between the space between the stadium and the school for different games and different food opportunities, so that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You sound busy.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Rae Wilson, and I'm also a senior at Cedar Falls High School. I'm involved in a lot of different groups, but the ones I'm here to talk to you about today is DECA, which is a business club and organization. It's a little hard to explain, it's, what we usually tell new members is you just have to experience it to really understand it, but it's mainly preparing people and students who are planning a career in business. And then I'm also going to talk about the art program just at Cedar Falls because the facilities have just really improved there, obviously because of the new high school, so I want to pull up my notes. So at the new school, it allows us to connect with DECA members in a deeper sense and allows for space to grow. Through my years of DECA, I've been there three years now, all three years at the high school. The old building was so cramped, we were in an unconditioned building up in like corner of the business hallway and area, but this year, our school group, our DECA, has like grown tremendously, so the space growing has helped us kind of keep up with that growth. So we use the learning stairs, which are, is just a huge help, and I see a lot of other groups using it too, so these stairs just allow us to connect with a lot of people at once and allow us to build a bigger community while also just keeping a group intimate, as like Jada said earlier, as well as if we have smaller meetings, we don't have to meet at the learning stairs, we can meet in the, just the normal classrooms, but all the classrooms are like equipped with a nice huge screen for us to really get our point across to everyone, as well as just technology and flexible seating, so that we can still meet as a group, as well as other people during tiger time, which they have to show up, so it kind of allows us to have a separate group while students continue on with their daily life, so that's really nice. In the new ceramics, that's what I've experienced this year is the new ceramics room. In the old ceramics room, I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it was tucked in a back corner of our room, which was already pretty small, and it was a little scary, but this new room is wide open, there's windows, so students are getting more interested in kind of seeing the work that we work so hard on, so it's just been nice, and all the wheels work great, and there just hasn't been any problems, like I feel like there has been in the past year, so it's just been nice to really experience a building that like is able to keep up with our many activities and groups, so yeah, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Leighton Schmidt, and I'm a sophomore here at Cedar Falls High School. I'm involved in a lot of different things like student senate, FCA, volleyball, and women's leadership, but the thing I'm going to talk to you about today is our foods room. So I've taken foods one, foods two, and the ones in eighth and seventh grade, and I love it so much. That's something I'm really interested in and passionate about because I think I can see myself doing that in the future. And at our new high school, our food room is way better than our old ones. We have cameras that show what our teacher's doing, such as like knife skills, so instead of like crowding around her or trying to like stand up on our chairs to try to see her, we can see her right from the TV screens, TV screens in front of us. Another thing is we have all new appliances, which are all so nice, and they work so much better. Our food is getting cooked right, and we can actually rely on it, and they're not really old too, like they're all brand new, and we're the first to use it, and it's really nice. And it's a lot more spacious, so we can actually all work together, like there's about four of us in a group for each kitchen, and there are six kitchens, and it all works so smoothly, and we can work together but also work by ourselves because of our islands in front of it. Another thing is our cafeteria. It's very interesting because it's not an actual cafeteria, but we have so much seating, and it's very spacious, and all the seating is also different, so you can sit in like booths, tables, high tops, circle tables. It's very nice because you don't have to sit in the same spot every time, and it's very comfortable. And we also during cafeteria, we have three different shifts, and we walk through it very quickly, like you get your food right away, which is really nice, especially me because I'm in sea lunch, last one, have to wait all day. So that's super nice, and they have three different sections, or four, so you can get your food whichever line you want. So it goes super fast, and it's super nice, and yeah, it's a very good way to just go through it. All right, that's all I have for you. Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Owen Brinker, and I am a senior at Cedar Falls High School, and I am here as a representative for both AmeriCorps and Piers. So in AmeriCorps, I get to work alongside two other AmeriCorps service members, Kaylee McSweeney and Maya Miller, as well as with our site supervisor, Carrie Deacon. So in AmeriCorps, our main focus is college and career planning post-secondary, and our big project that we're working on right now is the FAFSA and the completion of that for all of our seniors. So as an AmeriCorps service member group, we have set a goal of having 65% of the senior class complete their FAFSA, and I am very happy to say that so far, we've had nearly half of that goal met, which is very, very impressive rate considering the FAFSA has only been open for a couple of months now. So with the new high school, we are based in the counseling office, and it's very nice with this setup as opposed to the old high school, because it's very open where we have those glass doors where students walking by can see if there's an AmeriCorps service member available, as well as we sit at a big counter where we have plenty of space to work, which was a lot different than the old high school where it was a table that was kind of tucked off in this corner. So it was a lot easier to, it's a lot easier to work with other students now. The other club that I'm here representing is Piers, which is an acronym that stands for Passionate, Empathetic, Empowering, Radiant Students. In that club, we work with special education students, where we work to build relationships with them that you wouldn't usually work with, as well as give them something in their week to look forward to. It looks a lot different this year with the new high school and having a lot more space. At the old high school, we had 17 general education members and 12 special education members, and I'm very happy to say that it has grown to 27 general education members and 13 special education members, including one student from River Hills. With Piers, we've been able to go out into the collaborative spaces, as since we need so much more space with this new influx of students, as well as go out, go outside when the weather is nice and use the area there. With the new high school, we've been able to do all of these things that we wouldn't have been able to do at the old high school, and we've been able to improve these clubs tremendously. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Hi, my name is Summer Lim, and I'm also a senior at Cedar Falls High School, and today I'm going to talk about volunteer club and the music and science departments at our school. So with the volunteer club, the new space is really nice because some of the projects that we do for, like in the, in the school require a lot of space, and last year, we were stuck in the library, which didn't have a lot of open space. For example, this year, we've done like a toy drive around the district, and we had to make the boxes ourselves for that, and the big space was really nice to help set up all of those. And now, we're going to be doing like a tie blanket drive, and we're going to be making those tie blankets during school, so it's really nice to have the open space to be able to spread out and build. With the music, the new facility is really nice because the acoustics work much better, especially in the auditorium, and the new shell is just really great, our sound sounds much better, and especially in the orchestra room, last year, our intercom did not work, and so this year, it's really nice to be able to hear all the announcements and stuff, and especially with the practice rooms, there's a lot of students between like band choir and orchestra students, and there was only like a couple of practice rooms back then, and now there's way more, so that's really nice to be able to use. And lastly, with like science, it's just, all the facilities are much nicer, there's way more equipment and like lab spaces for us to do our experiments, especially with science club, I can, I know like the pod rooms that we have now are very nice, and we used to be cramped in one small room, and now all the different club groups like can spread out and get their own spaces to do what they need to do, so yeah, that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that was a treat, I think.
Yes, thank you, guys. No complaints, nobody has anything. It's awesome.
Yeah, thanks to each one of you for coming tonight, taken out of your busy schedule, and you truly are a good representation of what's happening at the high school, and I think one common theme I heard was just more space and transparency, so that's always a good thing, and allowing you to do what you do better, so.
I was muted the whole time. I hope somebody heard that. Okay, well, thanks again. We will now move on to our financial reports, so, Janelle, we'll start with November.
Absolutely. It's, it's hard to believe that we're in the middle of January, but we're talking about November, December. Super excited and thankful for the students to come and speak this evening. I always love to hear how the facilities are being used, as we, I don't always get the opportunity to go out to the buildings and see, and so as in finance, obviously, I get to see all of the bills and how those are going through, but I love to see and hear how much they appreciate it, how much they're utilizing it, and how much it's just helped with the overall students, so love to hear that. But we'll, we'll continue to go ahead and move forward with November. I'll go through these rather quickly, as we do have November and December, and, and we haven't spoke about them for a couple months, but quickly, in regards to November, general fund, that is our overall operations that includes our salaries and our benefits, but also the expenditures associated to heat and electricity and just overall operations. We had revenues of a little over $5.4 million, with expenditures of a little over $6.1 million, for total cash investments of $18,169,296. We do have our management fund, our management fund is utilized for our insurances, that's worksman comps, that's property liability insurance. The primary expenditure does occur in July as we start our fiscal year, but we do have some expenditures that do occur throughout the year. We did have revenues of $84,535, with expenditures of $2,676, for total cash investments of $1,163,779. Our capital projects, very thankful for our community for allowing us to utilize these dollars with our general obligation bonds, and very thankful for that. These funds were utilized for the construction of the high school, and as we continue to finalize the high school and finish those projects, you'll see that this fund will decrease, but we did have revenues of $25,396, those expenditures of $770,522, with then total cash investments of $6,583,049.31. We do have our SAVE, which is in PEPL, which are utilized for remodeling, construction, our fleet, as well as roofs, one-on-one computers, those dollars associated to that and those balances accordingly, our SAVE balance for total cash investments was $12,770,009, with our PEPL of $11,520,651. We then have our debt service, and you'll see that revenue associated to that of $380,115 that transfer in, that transfer in is utilized to pay our debt service on a twice-a-year basis of $361,376. Within our expenditures, our first expenditure associated to this fiscal year, our debt payment of $2,119,607, for total cash investments of $3,779,800. As we move forward, those remaining funds, then, we have our student activity, which is our clubs and organizations. We had revenues of $77,564, expenditures of $93,664, with total cash investments of $904,520. We do have our agency funds, and you'll see those balances associated to that, a total cash investments of $407,951. Our enterprise fund, which is our food service, with revenues of $410,330, we had expenditures of $312,485 for total cash investments of $3,572,873. We do have an active coffee shop, which is fully renovated at our new high school, which is super exciting for those students and community, with revenues of a little over $10,000. We have expenditures of $5,183 for total cash investments of $32,212, within our River Hills Consortium. As we move forward, then, with the remaining two slides for November, that just shows where we are at according to our certified budget at the time last year during our April, and so where those may sit, this is general fund through our debt service, as well as then if we move forward, those remaining funds of student activity through River Hills. Any questions on November before I move to December really quick? I won't read all of the, obviously, the balances associated to that, I will give you the opportunity to review those. Again, you'll see consistency throughout as we move forward with that next program, or with that next PowerPoint, very similar activity throughout the month of December as well, with the revenues and expenditures associated to that, where those balances may be. A couple of things to remember, there is a lot of timing issues, and what I mean by that is you'll see based on previous years to this year, some funds may flow through a particular month that didn't flow in the previous year, some of that is due to grants, as well as the Department of Education payments that we may receive. And so those are the balances associated to December. As we move forward, you'll see those remaining balances with student activity in River Hills. You'll see previously in November, there was no balance for River Hills Consortium, but there is this year, or excuse me, this month, and that's because that is a flow-through for our individual school districts that are in the consortium, and those dollars are then flow through to the Central Rivers then flow through to the Central Rivers AEA, payments made accordingly, with those balances ending at zero at the end of the year. So, the last two slides again are just those balances or those percentages associated to our certified budget. As we move closer to the certified budget, it allows me and, and also the, the school board to review, to see if there's any adjustments that may need to be made, based on expenditures that were not intended or expected at this time last year. So, any questions for November or December?
So, the TPC and pool phase two, that, that all comes out of the PEPL fund, correct?
Yes, it will. That is correct.
And so, the last two months, there's been significant inflows, and we haven't really started expending any of that yet. I'm assuming, but some of those inflows are either income from donations, or old high school sale, or...
Yep, so the...
Some of those things.
Yep, so the influx for November and December would mainly be the high school sale, because that was placed within our PEPL. There have been some donation payments as well that we've received for that project itself, and those expenditures will occur as we start beginning with that TPC and phase two. So, yep, great question.
Good, thanks. Any other questions from the board? If not, we'll move on then to, thank you, Donell, to item G of the agenda, which we have Dr. Jill White here tonight to share with us about modified supplemental amount application.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back to talk about at-risk funding again for another school year. Our presentation this year looks pretty similar for last year, so just kind of a reminder of the purpose of, of why we do the modified supplemental income, all those things, is that we're really planning for how we're going to meet all the students where they're at, and keep them in school, get them through graduation, and then help them be prepared for life after graduation. So, we're kind of thinking about all those moving parts at the same time. And so, in doing that, we're reviewing how we plan to spend the funds, and how we can serve as many students as possible with our allotted budget. So, one of the things that we do every year is kind of review those key terms that are included in the application, that we get these definitions from the state. So, just as a reminder, a student can be considered at risk for a number of reasons. So, they can include our students who are currently in a state of homelessness, they can include our students who are dropouts and returning dropouts, and then what this category called potential dropouts, which I'll go to kind of in that next slide. So, returning dropout is just anyone who is left and is coming back to us, so we're always happy to welcome students back. But this category, potential dropout, is kind of the most flexible. It includes a lot of different groups of students, so it includes students who have high rates of absenteeism, truancy, students who aren't really connected to school, either through academics or being involved in extracurriculars, students who are maybe struggling with some discipline issues, and students who are falling behind academically two years or more. So, there's lots of different pockets that fit into that group, and it can be in flux, right? So, you can be really at your best one semester and struggling another, and students can kind of move in and out of those, those lists. So, I'll go through kind of how we're planning to spend the funds for twenty-five, twenty-six, and then I like to just throw in a few little data points about how we did, are doing it currently or last school year, just as sort of, to make it, make the data make a little bit more sense as we go. So, our first category is mental health services, and last school year, we had three point eight FTE of services through Blackhawk Grundy Mental Health. So, that was actually two full-time, school-based therapists and three part-time. And they together served a hundred and ninety students in our district, with over three thousand, almost three thousand therapy sessions throughout the school year. They also serve students in the summer who maybe need more of that emergent care. So, we're really grateful to them. Our counselors are really grateful. We, we truly try to reserve our school-based therapists for students who would not otherwise have access to any mental health care. So, it's a really great service that we're able to provide. Next would be our alternative programs and our intervention centers. So, those are all housed over at our ESC building, and those funds go towards two teachers, a school counselor, half of our coordinator there, and then all of our online curriculum. So, last school year, our alternative program served fifty-four students, and they actually graduated twenty-six, which is a great number, thinking about students who need kind of an alternative way to learn and access school. And then, our intervention center served a hundred and twenty-three students. So, intervention centers there, if a kid may be struggling, has some discipline issues, but we don't really want to send them home. We want to keep them learning and help with their homework while they are out for a one or two-day suspension. They go there and they get some homework help, and they also get a little remediation of practicing, like how we're going to maybe make better choices when we re-enter, and things like that. So, that's a great program and a service to our junior high and high school students. For academic supports, we use these funds to support our at-risk teachers at the junior high and high school, as well as supplementing our reading teachers at the elementary level and our summer reading program. So, last year, in our secondary at-risk programs, again, that was sort of an estimate, those two hundred students, because we might serve fifteen students one day and thirty-five the next, and they, they can be in flux a little bit there. Our elementary reading programs serve about four hundred students district-wide, and at summer reading, we had around two hundred students again, at our summer program. In the category of our credit recovery and ECHOs, we support ECHOs as our after-school program at our two junior highs, so we have a teacher facilitator for both of those, and they help line up kind of all the different programming and bring in volunteers and UNI students. And we also have two elementary student success coaches, who really help with students who are struggling. They do skills intervention, they respond to crisis, they support principals in helping to keep tabs on those students who are having a hard time, so they have a second and third adult who's checking in with them every day. And our after-school programs continue to serve about a hundred students a week, and again, those students can change from week to week as well. Some students are required to be there for grades, and some just come for the opportunity. And then, our high school after-school program serves about two hundred and fifty students a year. Those numbers bump up as we get towards the end of semester, like right now, as students are needing more help, kind of getting caught up on things. And then, our elementary success coaches were, this last year was our first year of having those success coaches, so they, they were really kind of guessing how many students in a, in a week, and so, they were guessing a hundred students per year. This year, we're keeping a little bit more data, so I'll have exact numbers for you. So, the total for the dropout funding, then, is that one point four-ish million-dollar range. And then, we have a few things in just the at-risk category itself, and the biggest change this year is that we've added a second school resource officer. So, that has been really great, because they're able to divide and conquer and serve more of our students and be available to all eleven of our school sites throughout the day. So, that bumped that cost up, adding a second person. We also add in a few of our other ESC programs with our coordinator and our, and our secretary there, and our third success coach that we added last year, as well as some of those supplies, snacks, and all the things that we use for our after-school programming. So, that is about a hundred and seventy-three thousand of those dollars. So, here's sort of our summary of all the dollars together. So, in total, it's about one point six million, and then we take out that risk funding, we take out our required contribution from general funds, and it gets that dollar amount of our request down to just a little over a million dollars. And then, if you're curious about kind of the trend over time, you can see, if you're, if you're one who likes to kind of track how it impacts our tax rate and our, and our growth over time, this, I just like to update kind of that six-year window from year to year. And that's all I have about that. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Dr. White, could you explain a little bit more about the alternative program? So, I heard you say junior high and high school. So, for instance, how, what would be the youngest student, and maybe, maybe just a little more background on what the alternative program is?
For sure. So, the alternative program or the intervention center?
The alternative program.
Okay. So, our alternative program is our alternative high school program. So, that's mostly for eleventh and twelfth graders. There has occasionally been an exception made for a tenth grader who really needs a unique circumstance, but we found that students have the most success if they have a certain number of credits already built up before they come in, because it isn't all online-based program, and it's a shortened day. And then, our intervention center is within the alternative program kind of wing of that building. So, that's more of students who are out for like a suspension, and they just get some remedial learning, instead of just sitting at home on a suspension day. Did that help at all?
So, this would be, these eleventh and twelfth graders that we're talking about, these are students for whom a typical school environment just does not work for them, is that correct?
Correct. So, either they have to work to support their family, sometimes they are having to care for somebody in the home, whether it's their own child, any kind of, like, maybe they just had an alternate need, maybe they have, going through some mental health needs, that they, that the big high school program was just not the most successful for them.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry, I wasn't clear about that the first time.
So, this dropout prevention, is this the funding that is grandfather-capped, based on some prior law?
Yes, it is. So, it's been capped now for many years. The state budget allows for districts to spend up to five percent of their overall budget for at-risk funding or generate for at-risk funding dropout prevention. They picked an arbitrary year, and it was a year where, in Cedar Falls, we did not utilize the full amount of capability. So, we were at two point five percent of the budget that year, and that was the year they selected that you will be capped at that dollar amount, amount that you spend. So, yes, we are able to generate about half the amount that other districts are able to generate for these fundings, this type of programming.
And is that number, that two and a half percent, is that the less, the twenty-five percent from general fund, or is that the, the top line, like the one?
That, that is just how much dollars you can generate, so it'd be the top line. So, we would normally be able to generate twice that amount of money if we had not had that grandfathered amount in, or they took that arbitrary year in which we spent less. That would mean that the twenty-five percent, obviously, would be twenty-five percent of the larger amount that we'd have to use for general fund purposes, but that's well, well worth the, the extra dollars for the services that we could have provided for students that might be at risk.
I found myself wondering when you were talking about the mental health services part, the, the hundred and ninety students, is that at a capacity for, excuse me, capacity for the number of therapists that we are employing, or, I don't, you know, you were talking about you, the, those who participate are kind of those who, you're reserving it for those who can't access mental health services, otherwise? Could we serve more, or is that, I am just curious, and if there's capacity?
For sure. I would say that right now, all of our students have a waiting list, so we would be at capacity. It does ebb and flow a bit, and our counselors do a really good, nice job of summarizing our data from year to year, and we meet in the spring to see if there is a building that maybe is below or has a shorter waiting list, or not at all, that we shift some of the FTE to a building who has a longer waiting list.
Is that driven by just number of mental health professionals, or is that driven by the amount of funds that we have, going back to the two and a half percent that we're capped at? If we were at the five percent, would we be able to employ more through Blackhawk Grundy?
There's always more need. So, yes, if we had more funding, I'm sure that we could employ another mental health counselor. But right now, we, yeah, we have kind of our allotment, and then we, we move those FTE around to serve as many students as we can.
A lot of times, there's just capacity within the mental health field as well.
Yes.
Capacity issues.
It has been tricky for them to find coverage...
I wasn't sure what was driving our numbers.
Yeah, for sure. When they have somebody go out on a leave, it's hard for them to find us up, but we feel that, we feel that too. Any other questions?
Hearing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the supplemental amount.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the two, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six application to the School Budget Review Committee for Dropout Prevention and At-Risk Modified Supplemental Aid in the amount of one million sixty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to item H of our agenda, which is some more approvals of final acceptance and completion for a new high school project, so...
Yeah, absolutely. So, as, as in months past, we continue to finalize those, those bid packages that we had for the high school, as well as for the auditorium. This evening, for the high school, we have three bid packages that we will be approving. We have bid package three dash two, five dash one, and seven dash two. As we move forward, I'll show you the breakdown associated to each one of those. A bid package three point two was core construction out of Des Moines, Iowa. That was for the, the construction, or the concrete work, flooring at the high school. You'll note, the original contract was a little over three point five million dollars. We did have a few change orders associated to this particular bid package of a hundred and forty-one thousand. So, then, that total expected for bid package three point two is three million seven hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighteen cents. As we move forward, then, you'll note the next bid package of five dash one. This was Cedar Valley Steel out of Cedar Rapids. This was all of the steel beams, all of the steel work that's required at the high school as well. We had an original contract sum of a little over twelve million nine hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Again, this is not just for the, the construction of the high school, but also the stadium and the visitor building and all of those associated to that as well. We did, again, have some change orders associated to that in regards to Cedar Valley Steel of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand sixty-seven dollars and eighteen cents, for a total expended as of January thirteenth, thirteen million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents. And then, our final bid package for the high school specific was seven point two, and again, that is D&amp;G Metal Works, metal associated to all of the, the high school, and we had a contract approved on December twenty-first of twenty twenty, of one million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Again, there were change orders associated to this of ninety-five thousand six hundred and four dollars, for total expenditures of two million nineteen thousand eight hundred and four dollars and thirteen cents. As you will note, we, we have not finalized all of the high school bid packages. We will continue to have bid packages over the next couple of months as we finalize those projects within the high school itself. But any questions specific to the three bid packages for the high school, before moving on to the auditorium this evening?
Okay, no questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the final bid packages.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept, as complete, the following bid packages for the construction of the new high school, twenty-seven oh one West Twenty-seventh Street, for the following contractors and bid packages, three dash two, five dash one, and seven dash two. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and/or services provided for these contracts must be filed per Iowa code.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 And all opposed?
I will be abstaining, Will.
Okay, we have one abstention. So, with six, four, and one abstaining, the motion carries, and we'll now move on to item I of the agenda, which is the same thing but for the auditorium.
Absolutely. And, and just as a reminder, the auditorium was in phases, so this is for phase one, as we move forward, which is very exciting with phase two. So, we have started to finish phase one. We have two bid packages this evening. We have bid package seven dash two, which again, was D&amp;G Metal Works for Waterloo, Iowa. This was approved on October sixth of twenty twenty-two. You'll see the original contract sum of three hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. We did have a few change orders associated to that of six thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars, for a total expenditures as of January thirteenth of twenty twenty-five of three hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. As we move forward with that second bid package, then, it's nine dash one, Hillsaback out of West Des Moines. This would be your Sheetrock, for, for the need of the auditorium itself. We had total contract sum of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Minimal change order, again, for seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-three cents, for a total expenditures of two hundred and ninety... Minimal change order again for $7,576.73 for a total expenditures of $295,076.73. And just a reminder on these change orders, the district does have contingencies set aside accordingly for each particular project as we do expect there's changes within our projects. And so you'll see those as we move forward too. But we have the two bid packages this evening. If there's any questions, please let me know. We will see again as we move forward over the next couple of months as we finalize Phase One and move into Phase Two. We will finalize those bid packages over the next few months. So any questions?
Okay, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the naditorium bids.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept as complete the following bid packages for the construction of the naditorium at 2701 West 27th Street for the following contractors and bid packages, 07-2P and 09-1P. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and/or services provided for these contracts must be filed per Iowa code.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
And then all abstain?
Or abstaining. And so Director Leifer abstains, 6, 4, and 1 abstention, so motion carries. And so we'll now move on to item J, which is our superintendent's report.
Yeah, a pretty short report this evening. First one is legislative updates. Obviously, today was the first day of the legislative session. Not a lot of action usually on the first day. What we do know is there's still not a great amount of information on some of the bills that may be the focus of this legislative session. What we are hearing is kind of maybe three areas that might impact our public school districts in the state of Iowa. Property tax reform and what that may mean and look like, we're not sure. But that has been a topic of conversation. Cell phones and banning, limiting of cell phones within buildings and classrooms, especially at the secondary level, has been a topic of conversation. As well as there's been discussion about post-secondary focus and, and what it looks like at community colleges and, and our public and private universities across the state of Iowa. So not sure detail what that means, but conversation around each of those three areas. We do know that the State of the State address is tomorrow evening, so we'll probably get a little bit more clarity at that time, what that will look like, maybe what those priority focus areas are. Both the, as Janelle stated, we have our groundbreaking for the Shields Tiger Performance Center on Wednesday night. Certainly would invite all board members to be there to, to be able to have a board picture with the shovels and the turning of the dirt, which is just an exciting time. And again, a great thank you to our Shields Tiger Performance Committee and the work that they're doing, as well as all the donors and individuals providing that possibility. And then finally, Phase Two of the pool is continuing and ongoing. The main pool floor is poured, which is really exciting. They're getting the walls constructed as well as ready for a pour for those walls as well. It's just neat to see the progress that's occurring.
Good. Did you want to say anything about the new HR director as well?
Yes, we are excited and saddened both at the same time. Dr. Talbot is retiring after 20 years in the district. So we will certainly miss his presence as he moves into retirement at the end of January. So we would be remiss without saying congratulations to him. We went through a rigorous process to hire an individual, Amber Youngblood, with 20-plus years in HR leadership is coming into this position and started actually today for her first day with a transition period, being able to work with not only some of our central leadership, but also Dr. Talbot during this transition. So.
Good. Well, thanks for all of your years of service, Dr. Talbot. We will certainly miss you at the board table. But I'm sure you'll enjoy your retirement. Okay, now we just move into general questions, comments, concerns from board members. So we'll open up the floor.
Andy, I do have a question since you kind of mentioned it in the legislative update. The cellphone ban stuff, I know we've had some conversations. We've had some presenters come and talk to us. Are we making any progress on that front locally here?
Yeah, so what we decided as soon as we found out that there was going to be some legislative action, or at least a focus on that, not to try to implement something without knowing what that's going to look like. All of a sudden, if we take one direction, then have to change gears and go in another direction, that has a tendency to really upset people, especially as you try to maneuver that by training, retraining, and then explaining why it has to be different. So we are waiting for what's going to happen legislatively.
Makes sense. Thanks. Okay, anything else?
I have a brief announcement, Lowell.
Okay.
As many know by now, my family will be moving to the Reinbeck area in the next few months. Because we will reside outside of the district, I will be stepping down from the board as of January 27th per Iowa code. Although we are excited and optimistic about this next chapter, I am disappointed that I will not be eligible to serve my full term. Having said that, Cedar Falls has tremendous students, teachers, staff, and programs, and the future is very bright. I am grateful for having the opportunity to serve the community in this capacity. Yep.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, you know, serving on a local school board is a very noble thing. And we've appreciated your input and perspective over the past year and a half, I think, something like that. So you will also be missed at the board table.
Yeah, thank you.
So thank you for your service.
It's been a great experience and I encourage people to consider running to fill my seat.
Yep. So on that note, just per Iowa code, when there is a resignation on the board, the board has to, well, the board is authorized to appoint someone, but there's also a 14-day window where the community can petition to hold a special election to fill the seat. That tends to be, I would say, expensive, but it can be done if the community really desires that. So the official resignation will occur on January 27th, which we do have a board meeting that, that day. And then the 14-day window will start, I believe, February 1st. Shortly after that resignation is when the 14-day window will start. And this will be announced in the Courier. And so, yeah, as Director Witt said, if, if someone is so inclined, certainly there's an opportunity if, if someone wants to run for that seat, that is on the table. But at the end of that 14-day window, if we don't have that petition from the community, then the board will consider appointing someone to fill the seat. Another, another requirement of appointing someone to a vacated seat is that that seat then is required to be up for election at the next school board election, which actually is this fall. So this would be a very short appointment. But then that seat would then be up for reelection this fall. So. Any, I guess, questions or comments to that topic? All right. If not, we, we will not adjourn the meeting at this time because the board will go into a work session, which is technically an open meeting, but we are going into a, a conference room. And the topic of the work session is our StrengthsFinder coaching from TJ Warren. So this is part of our 2025 Board Goals, part of Goal Two for Culture and Climate. And one of the things that we said that we were going to do as part of our Culture and Climate goal is to go through the StrengthsFinder, the Clifton StrengthsFinder assessment and coaching as a board. And so we have, everyone on the board has taken the assessment and now we are going into a time of coaching with TJ Warren. So we will end, I guess, the, the live portion of the meeting and we will enter into a work session and then we will adjourn after that. Thanks, everyone, for tuning in and for attending tonight. Good evening.